I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America. For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is approval of minutes for the regular meeting on August 26.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Pollak, seconded by Mr. Marciano. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, and motion carries. Item number four, correspondence. We have no correspondence. Item number five, public comment. Norma Jean, did we receive any public comment?
No, we didn't.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number six is the consent agenda. What I'd like to do with the consent agenda is take items A, B, C, and E, and vote on those four items.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Marciano.
Second.
Seconded by?
Second.
Mr. Andriozzi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, and motion carries for those four items on the consent agenda. Item D on the consent agenda. Before voting on that item, on the consent agenda, I just want to be totally transparent with the public and inform them that by law, the school committee approves the superintendent's contract. All other contracts and appointments are under the jurisdiction and authority of the superintendent. And before voting on the superintendent's contract, I'd like to just make a personal statement, which I think is necessary at this point. I just want to take the opportunity once again to clarify the facts behind the superintendent's contract and the reasons we are voting on his agreement today. Unfortunately, the mayor has taken upon himself to criticize the contract and the superintendent. In this process, he misstated facts and created needless controversy because he either misunderstands the facts or is intentionally misstating them to gain some political advantage. We currently have one of the best superintendents who has ever served in this district. Under Joe's tenure, he successfully transitioned our students and staff through a school redistricting and a reopening during a pandemic. This was all done without fanfare or drama, just professionally and efficiently handled. In fact, when the governor chose to highlight schools that successfully opened across the state, she chose to spotlight North Providence. This does not happen in a vacuum. It happens because of good leadership. And under that leadership, a strong commitment by our administrators and staff to the students in our district. Before he was appointed superintendent, Mr. Gohoe was the driving force behind our high school turnaround, which has earned the district both statewide and national praise. Mr. Gohoe has worked for the district for more than 22 years as an administrator, and during that whole time operated at a very high level and very ethically. He knows every member of our 300-plus staff and knows all our strengths and areas in need of improvement. Mr. Gohoe is a much sought-after administrator and could easily earn more than his current pay in any number of districts. During the past several years, many town officials, including the mayor, asked Joe to apply for the top position in the district. Joe's chief concern was doing the best job he could without the distraction of becoming a political football. It looks like those fears were justified as the mayor has decided to try to create chaos and controversy, spreading untrue information and target our superintendent. And it is truly unfortunate that he chose this point in time while the superintendent is managing our students and staff's safe return to school in the middle of a pandemic. Some of the issues Joe is dealing with right now are literally life and death concerns, and they require his full and complete attention. These are the important facts, which either misrepresented or disregarded by the mayor in his radio appearances and political handouts. The superintendent's salary is in the lower half of salaries for superintendents statewide. The town is getting very good value for what it pays our superintendent. It is a legal requirement that we have a superintendent of schools, regardless of who sits in that seat. The district would be paying someone an appropriate salary. Like everyone else, Mr. Gohoe works for his salary. It is not a gift. The mayor's statement that this is a lifetime contract is false. The superintendent's employment agreement has a three-year term. State law provides that administrative contracts can only be for three years. As long as the school committee has no objection, the contract term will be extended each year for up to a total of three years at any time. The committee will give Joe two years' notice that the agreement will terminate, which is standard language in superintendent contracts. This contract provides the district the consistency of leadership it needs and has given us the ability to retain a truly outstanding, homegrown leader. Given his proven leadership and his past performance, we would be truly lucky to keep Joe for the remainder of his career. Contract also has a termination clause. He can be fired at any time for good cause. However, he cannot be fired for some political reason. This language is no different than the benefit enjoyed by our 300-plus teaching staff. If the committee decides that it would like to move the district in a different direction, the superintendent has the right to return to administrative position at a salary comparable to other administrators in our district. If Mr. Gohoe does a good job in that lower position, he is entitled to be employed until his early retirement date, which is June 30, 2027. Not 10 years, as the mayor has suggested. Since most superintendent contracts run for three years, this clause means we would continue to employ one of our most successful high school administrators ever for an additional four years, and only if he continues to do a good job in that position. This contract benefit is similar to what past school committees allowed for former superintendents and two other administrators who chose to return to the teaching ranks and continued to work honorably until their respective retirements. These terms are fair and equitable for an employee with over 20 years' proven performance and loyalty to our district. We designed the language to insulate the superintendent from politics and to allow him to continue to make the best decisions for our students and their families. This year especially, we all need to work on a successful reentry for our students and staff. The school committee should not be distracted by the mayor's attempt to tear down our school system for his own political ends. We need to focus our efforts on the successful education of our children as well as their safety and the safety of their families and all our staff. Just have one last comment. The mayor has chosen to use the superintendent's contract for political gain during the primary. And he also chose again to expose his misleading statements to the news media this past week. I think it is only fair that the general public should know the mayor's agreement. And these statements are fact, not fiction. In the year 2020, the mayor's salary would be $85,000. In the year 2021, his salary would be $95,000. In 2022, his salary would be $105,000. That's a $30,000 increase over three years. And additionally, the mayor pays a copay of 5% for his health care. That's also part of his agreement. And I can emphatically state that every school department employee pays between 20 and 22.5%. Is that fair? That's up to the general public and the taxpayers to determine. I don't begrudge the mayor's contract, and I'm not saying it because of that. I really, truly do not begrudge his contract. But I don't think the mayor should begrudge the superintendent's contract. Thank you. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's new contract.
So moved. Request a roll call vote, please.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. De Silva.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Picard. Any questions?
Discussion. I have one, I think I'd like to say.
Yes, Mrs. Picard.
So as a member of the committee that was here when we had the superintendent search, I want to be clear. The community also was very clear in their feedback in the community forums that what they were looking for in North Providence was a superintendent that would show consistency and be here for the long haul. While all of us can recognize that in the political climate, we cannot be beholden to the shifts of politics. This job is too important for our students, our staff, and our families. Joe has, this is not a contract that you would see just for anybody, as someone who gave out other superintendent contracts. Joe has a contract that allows us to value him because of the service he's provided to North Providence and the outstanding performance he's had. I just want to make that clear, and this was something that the community backed and were very supportive of Joe. It came out, if those of you that remember when we did appoint Joe, it was a full house that evening. And that full house wasn't because it was just anyone. It was because they were there to support Joe Gohoe and his outstanding performance in North Providence. So I am proud to vote aye for this contract.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion on the floor and a call for a roll call vote. Mr. De Silva?
Aye.
Mr. Corsini?
Aye.
Mrs. Picard?
Aye.
Mr. Andriozzi?
Aye.
Mr. Marciano?
Aye.
Mr. Pollak?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Contract passes seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Gohoe, and welcome aboard for another three years. Keep up the great work, and you're doing a fantastic job, and I would just add that keeping the community informed has been a huge asset because the families feel very comfortable that they know everything that is taking place within the school district. Thank you very much. Item number seven, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Pallata. So before I begin with the items under my report, I just want to take a moment to thank the school committee for your unanimous support. But I think most importantly, I want to thank you for working so hard to create a positive and stable environment for all of our educators, myself included. As you mentioned, Dr. Pallata, the district has achieved a great deal from major redistricting right through unprecedented and historic pandemic. And we've done so primarily because of the conditions that the North Providence School Committee has created, which is allowing educators to work in the best interest of our students. So it's been a pleasure working with each of you, and I look forward to it continuing. Thank you again for your support of myself, my administrative team, and all of the educators in the district. So first item on the agenda is an update on school inspections. So in your packet this evening are the individual school reports from the RIDE inspection team, as well as a letter from the Department of Ed culminating with a notification to the district in writing that the RIDE inspection team cleared all of our buildings, having met with the building principals and the central office team and the maintenance staff as well. So I wanted to be very transparent and make sure that our staff and our students and our families and the public knew that we passed that first inspection by the Department of Education. And as the school committee authorized a couple of meetings ago, we also brought in an independent company to test all of the buildings on a very thorough level for air circulation and ventilation according to the CDC guidelines. And so those reports, as well as a signature from the inspector, are also contained in your packet. And we have all of our buildings, obviously, as you know, that were cleared for the reopening on September 14. So again, we wanted to be very transparent with our staff, our students, our families, and the public to let them know that our buildings were ready to open, cleared all of the CDC guidelines. And I can tell you, in our discussions with both the RIDE inspection team and the independent contractor, the efforts that we have undertaken to address air quality and air circulation go far and beyond what many districts are doing and are able to do. So very proud of where we are, and I, you know, again, I wanted to share this information with you publicly and entertain any questions or any comments that you might have regarding the reports or the conditions of our building relative to HVAC and ventilation and air circulation.
I just have a quick comment, Mr. Gohoe. I want to thank you and the facilities department for certifying these buildings. It was either the last meeting or the meeting before I had it asked for certification and a sign-off by an engineer. And I understand that that occurred along with our own people making sure that our buildings were ready to be occupied by students and staff. So I personally would like to take the opportunity to thank our facilities department and everyone involved with that for getting our buildings certified in a proper manner. I appreciate that very much, and I appreciate the hard work that was done in a very short period of time. So thank you to everyone involved in that. Any other comments?
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, which is the school reopening. We're very fortunate. We implemented the governor's plan with a phase-in reopening divided by the alphabet for the first week of school. And many school committee members were present when the governor visited McGuire School. And then we toured all of our elementary, middle, and high schools on that first day. And I think the feedback that I received from the committee and the feedback that I took away myself was really a feeling of awe and amazement at the job that our professional staff did and has done and is continuing to do under very stressful and difficult and changing circumstances. I don't think people realize what is being asked of our educators today. Unless you are an educator yourself, we do have people on our school committee who are, so they understand it. A lot is also being asked of families, and a lot is also being asked of students. But you could not help but be inspired at the efficiency and the smoothness and the joy that filled our buildings on the first day of school. And it truly is a testament to our teachers, our support staff, our custodians, secretaries, and our building administrators, who are under a great deal of stress and duress, very difficult and changing conditions, having to juggle a lot of balls in the air and to do so as effectively as they have done to start the school year. That in and of itself is a small miracle, and I can't thank them enough and tell them how proud I am to be their superintendent. The same goes for my central office team, Mr. Sitzinger, Ms. Van Avery, Ms. Goet, Mr. Feroli, Ms. Cassinelli. Everybody worked very quickly with very short notice, with constant changes and updates and different guidance. And to open as smoothly as we did was truly inspiring, and I know, again, many school committee members visited those buildings on the first day. As you know, we've had to extend the alphabet transition at the high school for an additional week, which will end on Friday. We just finalized, thanks to Mrs. McGill and her team, working very closely with Mr. Cicero, we finalized some of the last-minute logistics that we needed to work out so that our students primarily can have lunch, not in the classroom and either in the cafeteria or in the gymnasium. We added time to the schedule to be able to spread out lunches in different locations and keep our students socially distanced, but also allow our professional staff to have the dignity of a lunch, some sanity during the day. So we're very happy about that. We also added some passing times to the schedule so that our students can pass efficiently in the hallway. We are scheduled to have over 800 students. So that additional week has proved extremely beneficial. And I can tell you that the high school team, working with Mr. Cicero and his teachers, have worked out a plan, so we should be ready to go next Monday for a full return at the high school as well. So I don't know if any of the school committee members who were on the tours would like to say anything, but I just wanted to update you on the efficient opening that we experienced.
Dr. Pallata?
Mr. Pollak?
Yes, I also would like to reiterate what Superintendent Gohoe said. I did also visit all of the schools that day, and I do want to put a very special thank you to Mr. Feroli, all of his custodians and his team, administrators. The schools look amazing, and I know they put a lot of work into it over the summer, especially this last month or so. The city amount of painting that's going on in the schools and everything to do with the pandemic, I just want to thank Mr. Feroli and all of his people, building administrators, teachers, and everybody for getting our students back and feel comfortable. And honestly, it was nice to see the look on the kids' faces back at school. They really had a lot of smiles on their faces, and it was nice to see that, so.
I agree with Mr. Pollak. I also attended the school visitations, and I want to personally thank Mr. Feroli and his staff for what they've done to get the buildings ready. In every school that we visited, there was not one issue. All the principals were satisfied. Talked to some staff members, they were satisfied. But I think we have to be realistic about the potential situation that, you know, there could be an infection that could break out in some school. But it's certainly not for the reasons in terms of our preparation and reentering kids back into school. We were clearly ready to do that. I hope there is no outbreak in North Providence, but I, you know, I would not be surprised if it happened. But I think we are prepared to deal with that because we're following the guidelines, the CDC guidelines and the RIDE guidelines very strict, in a very strict way. So relative to this topic, once again, thank you to the director, Mr. Feroli, and his staff and the custodians for getting our buildings ready to accept staff and students. And everyone stay safe and healthy during this very difficult time. Thank you. Superintendent Report. It's a Sitzinger.
Muted.
Yeah, muted. Okay, all right.
Sorry about that. I wanted to say good evening to everyone. Thank you to Superintendent Gohoe, and also good evening to the school committee, Chairman Pallata, Dr. Pallata, and all of you. Nice to see you this evening. And I do want to thank you for all of your support, especially for our superintendent, but also for all of us in the school community. We really appreciate it, and we couldn't do it without you. As Mr. Gohoe said, we had a great back-to-school first week of school. We had that special visit from Governor Ramondo. She was able to greet students at McGuire School, and that was really wonderful. That happened pretty quickly, but we made it happen, and it went very well. Special thanks to Principal Butler and his staff for hosting that special visit. And as you've said, we were visiting schools we've been visiting since the opening, all of the schools. And it's been really amazing to see the environments that are being created, both in person and at home through distance learning. We look forward to more of those positive learning experiences. But I wanted to personally thank all of our teachers, our students, our families, our principals, all the staff, our central office staff, and all of you as school committee members and community members for all of your support. So I just, on my update, I just noted, which I think you've seen before, just some resources that we've sent out for families regarding COVID-19 resources, which includes the health and wellness screening check-through Skyward information. And we're sending another reminder about that. Distance learning resources, and then that teaching and learning resource we sent to the teachers to help them understand what the expectations are, which we worked on with the teachers. And I want to thank the union leadership again and the membership because we could not have done that without their support. And I think it goes a long way to come from the teachers because they're the ones who are doing the work. Our first professional learning day was September 3rd. It was filled with differentiated professional learning experiences, which were virtual, including some PLC work at the school level, a session with Bradley Hospital on COVID's impact on youth mental health in grades K to 5. The Equity Institute offered virtual sessions for our middle school on culturally responsive pedagogy. And also, the high school had an Equity Institute virtual session. And survey results from our teachers indicated that 93% were comfortable incorporating what they had learned, at least from those sessions, into their teaching. And then also, as you know, we had professional development days on the 9th through the 11th, where schools worked on their professional learning, including collaboratively working on prioritizing content standards, planning for the first units of study of instruction, preparing SEL activities for our students, and sharing best practices. And then just a quick note that the comprehensive literacy grant for our elementary pilot programs for ELA, we're continuing to work on that, starting with our coaches, who are going to be working with our teachers right now. Because we're piloting in January, they're going to be spending time with our teachers on distance learning strategies, ELA curriculum, equity, SEL, and the things that I mentioned previously. We just sent our first update for that grant September 15th, so we're looking forward to that continued work. Very excited. And I just put a little snapshot from the district welcome back newsletter, and that includes our focus on our goals and some of the health and wellness screening information. And that's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I have, I'm going to speak.
Mrs. Picard?
I tried a couple of times, and I tried raising the hand and then doing it verbally. Joe or Louise, either one, a couple of questions. One, the daily check-ins. Do we know, like, how is it going, the percentage of families? And I'll be honest with you, I did not recognize that distance learning families also had to do the daily self-check. So I'm glad we did get clarification today, so that was helpful as a parent. But what's the percentage by school? Do you see that that's being?
I would say, I would say right now, Jean, probably 50%, right? It's something we need to work on. I think it's, again, it's a new, thing new, as you know. A lot of new things, protocols and systems being worked in, and I think it's going to take time. However, I will say that I think it's one of the most efficient, effective systems to use for our staff and for our students and families. So we're doing our best to kind of remind people and get them into that mode and pattern of behavior, but that, you know, we will definitely be following up as much as we can.
Is there a report that you can pull from Skyward that tells you, like, so I'm thinking, like, if you have the school secretary pull the report?
Yes.
Is there a district message that says, you know, you have not completed? Is that a possibility?
That, yeah, we'll have to look into that, but we can definitely get the reports, for sure. And again, that's only seen by certain people, obviously, because it's confidential health information. So school nurses and principals only, but yes, we can generate reports. I'd have to look into that feature.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they could use, and then they could physically message the families who have.
Yeah, and then. Kind of like a red flag.
Well, I'm thinking, I wonder about the Skyward usage, right? So a lot of times, we all have been struggling with this for a while, making sure our usage was up. The ways that we can maybe, and maybe, I don't know, someone could do like a virtual video for parents who don't know how to do it, sort of like a screencastify, walk them through, because that could be a struggle as well.
Yeah, what I will say is that we gave, you know, screenshots. It's very simple to access. And we, the weekend before we started, sent out messages so parents could reset their. I'm sure you got your host here, but so trying to, you know, just activate the process. But, yeah, all good ideas, and I will definitely check into that in terms of Skyward.
My other question is, we had a lot of concerns last year with the busing. I was just wondering how the buses are running, if they're running on time. Are we seeing any patterns?
Yes, so far, so good. I just, funny you mention that, I talked to our Transportation Secretary, Holly Santana, about that today. And probably because of the reduced capacity on the bus, they're running on time in the morning, and they're arriving, at this point, about a half an hour earlier than they had last year to their home stops.
So no concerns at any of the schools with transportation as of today?
Not as yet, no.
My only other question, actually, Mr. Feroli or Joe, was about the, as I was saying, we got called this week. So we're just wondering, based on the engineer's report, are there any specific schools that we have concerns about when we have to start closing windows that we have to sort of mitigate and think about now? are there any specific schools that we have concerns about when we have to start closing windows that we have to sort of mitigate and think about now?
Yeah, so when we get to new business, we'll be highlighting some of the two, some of the projects that we have for two schools where that would potentially be an issue with the cold weather.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Dr. Palata, just before I conclude my report, I just want to personally thank and acknowledge our outgoing Human Resources Director, Catherine Gauet, who is fortunate enough to be relocating to a more comfortable, warmer climate with her family and her husband, who has retired, and she's going to be moving out of state. And she's a tremendous loss to the school district, as you know. Everybody on the school committee has interacted with her, as have all of our employees. She brought a tremendous amount of experience and professionalism, and has really set up that office with systems and quality controls and organization that, you know, we are extremely grateful for, very happy for her that she can retire herself. But no, that she left a great mark in North Providence, and she did a lot of great work. And we are going to miss her, but we wish her well. And I did want to acknowledge her last meeting with us at our school committee meetings.
Thank you. Well, we, on behalf of the school committee, Kathy, and certainly members can comment, but I really appreciate the professionalism that you brought to that position, the experience, expertise that you brought to that position, and the overall oversight of all the duties and responsibilities that you had in that position. And you did it with dignity and respectfulness for all the staff members. And I certainly appreciate that. We will miss you, but we wish you well and stay safe and happy trails. Would you like to say anything, Kathy? You're muted.
I just wanted to say thank you to North Providence. Met some great people, very professional people who welcomed me right from the very beginning. I enjoyed my time. I wish everyone well. I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Kathy, thank you.
Right.
Hello. Yes.
Yes, I'd like to join in wishing Kathy the best. We went through some very difficult times, but we got through it in a professional manner that she conducted herself. Again, Kathy, best wishes to you when you retire, and thank you for the fine job you did for us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, I just want to sum up item number seven by thanking the teachers and the TAs. I know it's been a great challenge in your classrooms and trying to keep kids separated and keeping your kids wearing masks, it adds responsibilities. And I know it's not easy, and I appreciate everything that you do every day, particularly under these conditions. Also, I want to thank the leadership of each of the unions in cooperating with us in the best way that they can. Hopefully, as time goes on, we'll get better at this. The children that are involved in distance learning, I hope that we're meeting your needs. If we're not meeting your needs, certainly bring that to someone's attention. Also, I want to thank all the principals for their hard work and working with their staffs to get their schools ready. You've done a great, great job, outstanding job under these very, very difficult conditions. So I just want to give a big thank you to everybody. Number eight, school committee reports. We have none, we have no old business, moving on to new business. Discussion approval of the school committee meeting schedule, the Chair Lantana motion?
Don't move.
Don't move.
Motion by Mrs. Picard, seconded by Mr. Marciano, are there questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Second item is the paraprofessional hourly rate, which was submitted to you by Mrs. Goyette. And the justification, Chair Lantana motion?
Don't move.
Was, Ms. Picard, did you second that?
Yes, she did.
Okay.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Marciano.
Yeah, I understand with the current hourly wage being so low, we're having a great deal of difficulty getting subs. Mr. Feroli probably can attest to that, right? Very difficult. And I think we have to keep an eye on that number of $13 an hour proposal that we're voting on, I believe that's what it is. Because, you know, we may have to go a little bit higher than $13 an hour to get people, you know, because they want to come in, and many of them work their way into a point where they become permanent employees, you know? But their current wage is extremely difficult to get people, especially good people that are going to come in and do a good job for us. Certainly, I'm all in favor of a raise, but I hope this attracts some people, may not, but we'll give it a shot.
Thank you.
Dr. Palata, if I, if I, Dr. Palata, I just want to make sure, it's clarified, as Mr. Marciano said, this is for paraprofessional substitutes. Currently, we have about 20 paraprofessional vacancies or personnel who are on leave, and we're having difficulty attracting subs with the rate that we currently pay. So we are raising that, but it is for substitutes, as Mr. Marciano said.
Dr. Palata? Dr. Palata?
Mr. Pollak?
Unless I'm correct, I know Mr. Marciano said $13. Mr. Go, I believe that you set to $12 per hour, correct?
Correct, it's $12 an hour, which would put us above what most of our area districts, slightly above what most areas districts are paying this up.
I have just a point. I agree with you, Joe, and still he's also searching for subs. We just approved last night an off-school committee meeting, increases rates of pay for substitutes, teachers, assistant, teacher assistants, as well as custodians. But I can also tell you, not everybody uses school spring, so if you do school spring, it goes to Indeed. But I would suggest, like the Breeze, when you're looking for custodians, I know this is for paraprofessionals too, I would suggest that we not just do school spring, because there are a lot of people that are out of work that will look and not look at school spring if they're not in education. So I think we just cast that net a little bit wider.
I agree with you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to move the hourly wage to $12 per hour. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item C, Chair Lantana motion to approve the nursing contract?
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Marciano?
Second.
Seconded by?
Mr. Andriozzi.
Mr. Andriozzi. Sorry, Steve, I don't have your picture on my screen.
Quite all right.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item D, approval of the sergeant center contract?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Andriozzi, seconded by Mr. Marciano. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excuse me, one up, one opposed? Does somebody oppose?
I don't think so.
Okay, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Gojo and Mr. Feroli. And maybe either of you can attach a cost to these projects in terms of the building management system and reimbursement by COVID funds, if you don't mind.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Palata. And I'll ask Mr. Feroli and Scott, our HVAC person, who I think is joining him as well. So Mrs. Picard raised a valid question about stage two. We certainly were ready for the opening of schools because we're able to keep the windows open. And when the weather changes, that'll become more difficult. Even still, at most of our schools, because of the internal HVAC system and exchange of air through the mechanical system, we should be fine at all of our schools, except for two, unless we take some work on. We should be fine once we have to close the windows and turn the heat on. So we have two proposals for you. We're going to end up tabling item G, as new information came to our attention this morning that requires further investigation about options regarding the gymnasium at Senedale. So I'm asking for approval of the school committee to approve the management system upgrades at both Greystone and Senedale. Mr. Feroli can speak in more detail, but essentially, what we have done at those schools is that we have opened up all of the windows and the dampers manually. However, they cannot remain open in that manner in the winter because the dampers will freeze. So we need a computer-controlled management system to operate all of the internal controls of the building and the HVAC system at both of those schools. So we are going to be applying to have these projects paid for by COVID funds. As you know, the governor has mentioned that a sum of money has been set aside for schools for COVID-related purposes. In North Providence, we have been, we are able to apply for $863,000 approximately. We have spent a good deal of it already on PPE supplies and Chromebook leases and cameras, you know, for the classroom, for the live streaming. But we have at least three quarters of that money still remaining, $863,000 of it. And these two projects will be part of the application that is able to be submitted at the end of the month. The Greystone Building Management System upgrade is approximately $90,600. And the Senedale Building Management System upgrade is approximately $100,000. And that money has been figured into the COVID application. We met with Lisa Cassinelli in finance to ensure that we will be able to cover these funds, assuming that they would be approved as part of our COVID application. So Mr. Feroli, if you would like to add anything, or if any members of the committee have any specific questions?
Mr. Feroli, do you have anything to add?
Mr. Superintendent basically summed up what the whole project will be, will be able to maintain. More control out of all the, those schools that we don't, that don't have any control right now, basically. So we will be able to see remotely what's going on, be able to tell in alarms. And this is also going to have UV in the units, so we will not have to have help. Hepa filters in the classroom, and we'll get this great amount of air change.
Okay, thank you. I just have one question. As we move closer to the winter, is there anything that we need to have done in preparation for the winter? Mr. Feroli or Mr. Go, Mr. Feroli?
We'll definitely take care of this too, Senedale and Greystone. We're still waiting for more guidance from the state on the rest of the schools. I believe I know what they're going to do, and I believe we're in good shape, but they didn't really give us all the guidance yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the Chair Lantana motion for item E and F, approval of the Greystone Management System and the Senedale Management System.
Don't move.
Seconded by Mr. Pollak. Any additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Discussion and approval of the Senedale Energy Recovery Ventilation for the gymnasium. Any further comments on that? Mr. Gojo, you want to table that, I understand?
Yes, we do want to table that. We received some new information, and we're going to possibly go down another less expensive avenue to accomplish what needs to be accomplished there. So we'll have more information forthcoming.
Okay, the recommendation is to table item G. Motion?
Move.
Marciano?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Andriozzi. All those in favor?
That was Mr. Costini.
Sorry.
It was Mr. Costini.
Very difficult when I don't have your face on the screen, I'm sorry. The second was by Mr. Costini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Wayland Healing Circulation Pumps, Mr. Gojo or Mr. Feroli?
Yes, so this too is related to the conditions that we have to create for air exchange. Wayland is a building that does not have an HVAC rooftop unit. So we have to create air exchange and air circulation systems that are going to involve fresh air. Now, the issue with that is even pre-COVID, there have been areas of Wayland where the heat in the really cold weather has not been able to reach. So we've had cold classrooms, cold areas of the building, and it's largely because the heating pumps are not the appropriate size. And so we anticipate having to create these conditions of air circulation with fresh air that'll continue through the colder months. That will only exacerbate the situation if we don't upgrade the heating circulation pumps. And again, we will be applying for COVID funds because it is directly related to the air circulation, and we need to create that.
Thank you. You have anything to add, Mr. Feroli?
Superintendent summed it up perfect.
I should say, not too bad, not too bad, huh, Jimmy? I learned a lot.
No, no, good job, good job.
So I should say that the heating circulation pump job at Wayland is about $6,000.
Thank you. Okay, the Chair Lantana motion to approve the Wayland Heating Circulation.
Don't move.
Second.
Marciano, seconded by Mr. Pollak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 11, approval of bills. Chair Lantana motion?
Don't move.
Marciano?
Second.
Seconded by?
Andriozzi.
It was the Andriozzi.
Mr. Andriozzi.
Yes, sir.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next item, item 12, use of property requests?
So moved. Second.
Was that Mr. Andriozzi?
Andriozzi and Mr. Marciano.
Yes, it was.
Mr. Andriozzi, seconded by Mr. Marciano. Are there questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, any requests? We have no requests to address the committee. We have no pending business. Item 15, Lantana motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. Marciano?
Second, second, by everyone.
Seconded by Mr. Costini and Mr. Andriozzi.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, meeting is adjourned.